We are getting ready to gear up for the county council meeting and we also just wrapped up the public facilities meeting. I'm without my partner in crime today, so I will try to keep this as interesting as possible and it also may be a little bit short. So first, we're going to take a look at some of the agendas that we are going to be seeing today. So first things first, at the Public Facilities and Safety Committee meeting, we heard about an update on the Beaufort County Detention Center given by Colonel Quandera Grant. On the meeting agenda today, there was also a few ordinance amendments and they were presented by Beaufort County Deputy Attorney Brian Holbert. It also included an intergovernmental agreement with Hilton Head Island for the William Hilton Parkway Safety and Pedestrian Improvement, as well as two equipment requests for our Beaufort County Convenience Centers. That is just a little recap of what we've already seen. And coming up at the county council meeting that will be airing here in just six minutes, we've got a wide variety of some very important topics. We're going to finally hear on the long awaited investigation by Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd and we're going to hear a statement from County Council Chairman Joe Passamit. Then on the agenda notably, we have two items relating to amendments county code regarding is made possible by funds from the, excuse me. Also here, county council will approve the procurement of a conservation easement on a property known as Gregory Neck. And we also are going to have more information on that on our social media later with a Beaufort County report from our Public Information Officer Hannah Nichols. There's a procurement that is made possible by funds from the Beaufort County Green Space Program, which voters approved way back in 2022. Additionally, there is an item to consider amending, a previously adopted resolution regarding the Low Country Area Transportation Study. We'll also see the possibility of an intergovernmental agreement with Beaufort Jasper Sewer Water Authority for the Lobecko/Morgan Road Waterline Project and the acceptance of a Department of Agriculture grant for Gay Fish Company. I know this sounds like a lot, but these are just the highlights. So as always, we encourage everyone to come check out the agendas, packets, and the minutes. And you can find all of this stuff on beaufortcountysc.gov. We have a packed house in here tonight. We are pulling out, we got two extra rows so far and we still have, you know, about five minutes until this meeting begins. So it is excellent to see our members of the community that are really taking an interest in everything that is happening within the county and that is exactly what we want to happen here. And we want to continue to encourage people to come and speak and really get involved with your council members. To do that, we also have a couple of events coming up. We are going to be hosting five community forums to educate and inform the public of the upcoming election season. These are going to all be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. with the first one being April 3rd, which was last Wednesday. The next opportunity is coming up on this Wednesday, April 10th, at Frizzell Hall Penn Center, 16 Penn Center Circle West. Then the next one will be Wednesday, April 17th, in Port Royal at the Port Royal Town Hall at 700 Paris Avenue. The next one will be at the Hilton Head Branch Library at 11 Beach City Road and that one will be on Thursday, April 25th. And the final one will be Tuesday, May 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Mount Carmel Baptist Church at 367 Keene's Neck Road. Every single one of these are free and they are open to the public, so we encourage everybody to come out. But that's all the time we have now, so stay tuned for our county council meeting that will be taking place here in just a moment.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the county council meeting of Monday, April 8th. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then please remain standing for the invocation, which will be conducted by Councilman Glover?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I open up the prayer, just want to make two observations that I know of. One of it is has nothing to do with the prayer, but just want to recognize USC.
Lady Gamecocks.
Gamecocks, even though I'm from Clemson, but Gamecocks.
Gamecocks, thank you.
And the other one is really the awesomeness of God. We had a chance to witness an eclipse and as a child, I was probably nine or 10 when I experienced the eclipse and all of a sudden it got dark and I had to be at home in the house before it was dark. And then a few minutes later it was light again and I didn't know what it was. So I learned what the eclipse was and I still don't know the difference between a solar and a moon eclipse, but the experience of God, the awesomeness of that. So join me in prayer. For all you have done, Father, we thank you. We magnify you, we glorify your name. You are awesome, God, and you have made everything perfect. It is mankind who you entrusted to be good steward of the land that have always messed up things, God. So we recognize your magnificent way of doing things and it's perfect, so we thank you for that. Now, Father, we at this time just pray for peace on earth. There are disturbance in the Middle East, God, we pray for peace there. For Ukraine, we pray for peace there. And God, we know that only you can bring ultimate peace to all of us. Bless this occasion, bless the council as we deliberate here. We trust, Lord, that we will do what is pleasing in your sight. Now, we give you all the honor and glory in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Would a member of council please make a motion and second to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Glover makes the motion.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved without objection. Next is our minutes from March 11th, 2024. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Tabernick.
A second.
Mr. Glover. Duly motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection. And before we go into our administrators' report, I would be remiss in saying the only person missing from council's meeting tonight is Ms. Howard. She is out of town. Mr. Lawson, his bright charming face is online. Everybody else is here in council, so we do constitute a quorum. And now we will have our administrators' report. Good evening, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, council. How are y'all? First, I'd like to thank our finance team. Our finance team has been working very hard to prepare our FY 2025 budget. We have a few more, we have some more work to do, a few more meetings to get through before our budget is presented to committee on May 1st, but I wanted to recognize the hard work that they've been doing. Many of them are in the room tonight, so thanks for what you do. On April the 2nd, I attended a community meeting sponsored by Mr. Lawson, who is online with us tonight. The conversation that evening was about the All Joy Boat Landing. Ms. Paula Brown was also in attendance that evening. Our Public Works Director presented four kind of sketches, preliminary drawings, to inspire conversation amongst the community group to collect more ideas. So we've been accepting different thoughts and ideas from the community and in our online access, and many of them filled out forms while we were there. So if you're listening and you still have ideas, keep sending them into our website as well as any of the documents that are online. And I believe those plans were also posted on our website. It was attended by 60 to 80 folks and I think we had a pretty spirited conversation. I think it was pretty good. Also, a few days later, on April 4th, I attended a community meeting in Mr. Glover's district. This was also attended by Representative Shannon Erickson. Representative Michael Rivers was in attendance as well. And Mr. Glover read a letter of support from Senator Chip Campson, supporting our discussion about the Rust Point Boat Landing. While we were there, we also had our Assistant County Administrator for Information Technology, Patrick Hill was there, and Hannah Nichols, our PIO, was present as well. So during that, during that meeting, Mr. Glover read the letter of support from Senator Campson about the repairs or the temporary repairs for Rust Point that the state is going to make happen, is the State Parks Director. Mrs. Erickson and I answered questions and talked about that for a little while, as well as Mr. Glover. And I'm going to tell you, he drew a big crowd. There was more than 120 folks at his meeting, so that was a packed room at the St. Helens Library. So it was a really nice, really good event. We got to spend a good bit of time with members of the community there. Last Friday on April 5th, I was honored to speak to the 2024 Class of Leadership Beaufort. They also heard comments from Beaufort City's manager, Scott Marshall. Representative Erickson was here that day and she brought Senator Campson with her. So both of them got to address the group. Followed up was local government 101 from Stephen Murray. So they had a really good afternoon here. It was a good group as they approached the end of their leadership class. Next, I'd like to talk about some employee recognitions. I'd like to introduce you to Lieutenant Brenda Bush. Did Lieutenant come tonight? No? She's still, she's still, she's still out of town. All right. Well, it said she wasn't going to be here, but I was hoping that she snuck up on us. And yesterday was her birthday, so congratulations to Brenda. So I will talk about Lieutenant Bush. Lieutenant Bush manages the certification program for our officers in the Detention Center. She ensures that the staff meet the certification requirements through continuing education programs and conduct their, she conducts testing for their promotions. She ensures that all new applicants are properly screened and qualify for employment per our SLED and South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy requirements. She assists in drafting policies, procedures, and certifies that, sorry, I lost my place. And certifies those policies, practices, and facility to ensure the facility meets our accreditation standards. She serves as the liaison to our information technology group and works with them and other outside vendors to ensure our equipment functions properly. She works as a supervisor in the booking area, so she ensures that booking supervisors enter proper charge codes, which is very critical for inmates as they enter our facility, collect proper DNA samples, and enter appropriate FBI and SID information for incoming inmates. Lieutenant Bush enjoys her weekend getaways with friends. Prior to working for Beaufort County's Detention Center, she also worked for three years in the school district and two years with disabilities and special needs. On her days off, she likes watching Netflix. She has three children, a Navy corpsman, a, one is a bachelor's of nursing, so her is a traveling nurse, and one student or one child who attends school for funeral services graduating in May. And again, her birthday was in, was yesterday. So thank you, Lieutenant Bush, for everything you do. There she is. And we have Tracy Bordeaux. Did I say it right?
Yes, you did.
Tracy has served for, served Beaufort County for 25 years. She is a, she works for Beaufort County Disabilities and Special Needs. She is a residential housing manager. So we have 11 homes, is that right? Did I get the number correct? So our residential, our residential homes house our community members. Am I getting it right? Up to four or sometimes six?
Four.
Just four?
Yes.
Right? So she makes sure that our residents are cared for properly, that they have a safe environment, and they have all kinds of different things they can do. I'll tell you about that a little bit. So she, she supports their living inclusively and independently within the community. So she manages daily operations of four resident homes, including hiring and scheduling staff, training, and supervising a 24-hour-a-day operation. They, she makes sure that they schedule maintenance, because they're just like our homes. They need painting, they need care, they need steady upkeep from our facilities departments and CIP departments. So they maintain the household supplies, manage household budgets and finance, and help support the residents in maintaining family connections. Did I get it all?
Yes.
Yeah. Not yet. See, there's more. Tracy was introduced to the, to the healthcare field and embraced the position after providing healthcare for her twin sister. She's passionate about caring for people and is, which is evident in the high level of care she provides. She is a natural leader and consistently builds strong, cohesive, and effective teams. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
And we have from our Alcohol and Drug Department, Tammy Figaroa. Tammy here? No? I'll read about it. So Tammy is a, is a human services counselor with Alcohol and Drug. She served Beaufort County for 11 years. Tammy's been with the agency working in the adolescent services since November of 2012. Until a year ago, she was the sole adolescent counselor servicing all of Beaufort County. Tammy loves working with the youth of Beaufort County. She's volunteered with Kids Fest and the Beaufort County Youth Conference for many years. Tammy loves her family, traveling, and likes taking nature walks. Thank you so much, Tammy, for what you do. Sir, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The next-
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a comment? Just to include the, at the public meeting, Patrick Hill was there.
Oh, yes.
And I just want to articulate that Patrick only had a short presentation, but he brought wealth of information to the community about broadband expansion and working with Comcast, who's gotten the grant with, from the state to open up broadband on St. Helens, or in rural communities, not only St. Helens, rural communities. So just want to make that, say that.
Mr. Dawson.
The next four items on our agenda are all proclamations. It's the time where we honor people for what they have done, or it is like the first one where we're going to recognize Library Week. And our council member, Ms. Tabernick, will make that presentation of the proclamation.
And to receive the proclamation is our Director of Libraries, Amanda Brewer-Dickman. She has made our libraries stellar throughout this state. How many people have a library card here?
Oh, yeah.
Look at that. And if you don't have one, see her. Okay. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are in life's journey. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries adapted to the ever-changing needs of their communities, like during COVID, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as our population. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. Whereas library, there's a couple more. Whereas libraries make choices that are good for the environment and make sense economically, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. Whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Beaufort County proclaims National Library Week, April 7th to the 13th, 2024. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library. National Library Week dated this 8th day of April, signed by Joe Passamit, Chairman of Beaufort County Council. And now she will speak. Anything you want.
Thank you for having library cards. It is, it is a pleasure to be among people who value reading and learning, especially lifelong learning. I can tell you, every day I feel the support of Beaufort County and I appreciate you for checking books out, either in person or through our apps online. Thank you for supporting libraries and we hope to continue to provide to you stellar library service. Thank you so much.
One more thing, just to mention, she's overseeing the Port Royal branch that we just named, St. Emory, and we will have another branch coming on May River, so she's going to have her hands full.
Our next presentation is a proclamation recognizing April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and that proclamation will be read by Councilmember Brown.
Okay. And whereas-
Me either, so we're all together.
Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has dire public health implications for every community member in Beaufort County. And whereas rape, sexual assault, sexual harassment impacts our community, as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women and one in 71 men will experience sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas hopeful horizons are local children's advocacy, domestic violence, and rape crisis organizations served 1,242 primary victims of sexual violence and provided 217 survivors of domestic and sexual violence pre-legal services in the year of 2023. Whereas hopeful horizon urges every person to speak out against harmful attitudes and actions that lead to violence. And whereas all people are encouraged to report all types of violence in the community to make it safer. And whereas provision, prevention of sexual violence is possible, therefore, we must work together to increase awareness by using the hashtag #PreventSexualViolence and involve all members of the community in these efforts, as well as help survivors connect with services. Whereas prevention of sexual violence is possible, therefore, we must work together to increase awareness by using, again, using the hashtag #PreventSexualViolence and involve all members of the community in these efforts, as well as help survivors connect with services. That said the same thing. I didn't realize that. Okay. So-
Whereas prevention of sexual violence is possible, therefore we must work together to increase awareness by using, again, using the hashtag #PreventSexualViolence and involve all members of the community in these efforts, as well as help survivors connect with services. That was a, that said the same thing. I didn't realize that. Okay. So now, therefore be it resolved by the Beaufort County Council, joins advocates across the United States and the state of South Carolina to proclaim the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urges all citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of sexual assault, supporting those who are working towards its end and participating in community efforts aimed at changing the culture of violence. This is dated 8th of April today by Joe Passamit, our Chairman, Beaufort County Council.
Thank you. Just really quickly, my name is Angela Simmons, and I serve as the Chair of the Board for Hopeful Horizons. And on behalf of all of the staff members at Hopeful Horizons, and in particular, you heard the statistic, on behalf of the 1,200 survivors in the local community, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation and for raising awareness about this issue. So thank you so much, we really appreciate this.
Thank you.
Next on our list is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing alcohol awareness and underage drinking prevention month in Beaufort County, and that will be read by Vice Chair Larry McKellen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting. We're glad to see all of you. This is a proclamation, I suppose that's why you're here, right? Well, come on up. Wait, I'll let you introduce everybody else when you come on up, okay?
Hi. I'm Katie Godowns. I'm a Senior Preventionist with Beaufort County Drug and Alcohol.
I'm Jody Martinez. I am a Program Manager for the Drug Free Communities Grant.
And good evening. I'm Wade Bishop. I'm the Director of Prevention Services for your Beaufort County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Department.
Yeah, and they do, they do a great job, and I'm very happy to see them here tonight to participate in the issuance of this proclamation. This is an Alcohol Awareness Underage Drinking, Underage Drinking Prevention Month in Beaufort County. We know, and I think you'll all agree with me at this point, we understand that if a parent can prevent a child from abusing alcohol or drugs through the age of 21, which isn't easy, the likelihood of that person developing, developing a problem with alcohol or drugs as an adult is reduced to zero. That's a pretty dramatic statistic that's been proven over time, but it takes a great deal of effort to do that, and sometimes parents don't have all the time they need to do that, which is why it's important we have people like this here helping us in our community address that particular issue. In addition to underage drinking and all of the different things that that can create problems for a person as they go through the difficulty of dealing with that drinking as either a youth or an adult, we have in this county an additional problem of driving under the influence. It's a serious problem here. In the first three months of this year, there have been 70 arrests in Beaufort County for people who are driving under the influence. In July of '22, we had a backlog of DUI cases of about 360 cases in the magistrate's court. The sheriff's department then hired two lawyers, and those lawyers since July of '22 have put through the system 484 DUI cases. They've reduced the backlog of 360 down to, as of today, only 60 cases. They have a 74% success rate with those prosecutions for DUI, and a reduced charge, 24% success rate with reckless driving. So their clearance rate successfully is now 94%. So instead of having a 360-case backlog, we now have 60 cases waiting to go to trial, but they're recent arrests, as evidenced by the fact we've had 70 in this first quarter. In the second and third quarter, we'll have a lot more, simply because we have a lot of tourists coming through during those months. So this is important, the work they're doing, and this proclamation is to help recognize that and to emphasize how important it is to address the issue of underage drinking. So whereas adolescence is a critical and often vulnerable stage of human development, and it is during this time that many young people experiment with substances such as alcohol. And whereas compared to those who wait until they are 21 years of age to drink, young people who start drinking before the age of 15 are at higher risk for developing alcohol use disorder later in life, and are more likely to be in a motor vehicle crash due to alcohol use. And whereas youth who drink alcohol are more likely to experience problems in school and their social life, legal problems, physical and sexual violence, a higher risk for suicide and homicide, misuse of other substances, and have changes in brain development that may have lifelong effects. And whereas the solution, ending underage drinking, comes through widespread collaboration and engagement of multiple organizations and communities with all adults doing their part. And whereas during this month, we ask that parents, youth, government agencies, public and private institution, businesses, workplaces, and all Beaufort County citizens support the efforts to reduce and prevent underage drinking in Beaufort County by limiting alcohol availability to minors. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council is hereby proclaim April of 2024 as Alcohol Awareness and Underage Drinking Prevention Month in Beaufort County, signed by Joe Passamit, Chairman of Beaufort County Council. I'll just go on to say that we also have a problem here with drug abuse, both unsuspected and probably unexpected use of a poly-drug environment we live in, where we have had fentanyl introduced into all the different poly-drugs that are available. And fentanyl is a drug in a very small amount that can cause death. And people are using that here in Beaufort County, as they are nationwide, but it is something that this group works on all the time to try and get people who have the problem with drug abuse to stop using drugs and reduce the risk of being exposed to death by fentanyl overdose. So in addition to the alcohol work they do, they also do a lot of work with, with drug prevention and education. And I'll tell you, there's a three-legged stool you need to have success: law enforcement, education and prevention, treatment and rehabilitation. They're not in law enforcement, but they're doing all the other things that you've heard of. And if any of those legs of that stool collapse, we're never going to solve the problem. So congratulations to you all.
Mr. Jay, we, we want you in the picture. So part of, part of our job is, we wrote some grants to get into the community, because like you said, community engagement is key. So you just met Jody Martinez, who is our new DFC Coordinator, and I am so thankful that she is hired. She has 25 years of law enforcement experience from Mesa, Arizona, so we're glad to have her onboard. But part of that is that we had to build a coalition of 12 sectors in the community, and we have one with us tonight, so we want him to be in our photo. This is Mr. Jay Turner, and he's from Rooms of Grace.
One final thing. Beaufort County has been fortunate enough to have two, been awarded two Drug Free Communities coalitions, and the grant is for, Bluffton-Hilton Head is in their sixth year. It's a grant for $125,000 a year, and the local communities have to match it in kind. And we are in our first year in the northern Beaufort County, so we hope that those of you from northern Beaufort County will find out more about us. We're branding ourselves in recent weeks or future weeks, and we'll be set to go for the next five years and hopefully get refunded for up to 10 years. Thank you for your time.
And our final one is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing the Hilton Head Island Public Service District. And Mr. McKellen will read that proclamation as well.
Mr. Chairman, before you go on, Larry, while Mr. Bishop is going out, I wanted to say I apologize for not recognizing him.
Wade, talking about you.
I apologize for not recognizing you a few minutes ago. I gotta get used to your beard.
Okay, thank you. Frank, would you come on up? And Pete, come on up. Sarah, are you here with them as well? Come on, come on up, please. This is a proclamation for the Hilton Head Public Service District, and as I read it, you will see what it is for and about. Oh, there are other people too, sorry. Oh, I didn't realize that. Listen, you may as all, you may as all just come up here. How are you? I didn't realize the whole commission was coming. I'll let you do the introductions. This is Frank Torano, the Chairman of the Board of the Public Service District, and I know him. Pete Nardi is here, the General Manager of the Public Service District. And Sarah Hickman, who I was prepared to introduce as well. I'll let you introduce the others.
Andy Potino, our Commissioner. Jerry Kula, our Vice Chair. Pete Nardi, who is our head. Pete, will you please introduce your staff?
Yep, so we're honored to have some of our great staff members from the PSD. Sarah Hickman is our Water Quality Supervisor, Director of our Water Quality Laboratory at the PSD, handling our drinking water, wastewater compliance and monitoring. Pete Shulkey is one of our project managers. He works out in the field with our customers, getting people connected, and really heads up our Cross Connection Control and Backflow Prevention Program, which is a lot of public safety, public health. Brian Fedorik is the Supervisor of our Advanced Treatment Recycled Water Plant. So he's in charge of our 6.4 million gallon a day recycled water plant on Oak Park Drive, where we're recycling municipal wastewater into the beneficial recycled water that we use on the island for golf course irrigation and long-term wet drainage.
Well, I feel like I don't have to say anything, but I will. We're honoring them for the great work that they've been doing and for the recognition that they've received for that work. So I'll be happy to read this. Whereas it is with immense pride that Beaufort County Council acknowledges the remarkable achievements of the Hilton Head Public Service District and its dedicated personnel. And whereas the Public Service District, through its unwavering commitment to environmental stewardship and regulatory compliance, has been honored with the prestigious Facility of Excellence Award by the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control. And whereas the recycled water plant on Oak Park Drive, under the exemplary leadership of PSD General Manager Pete Nardi, has been instrumental in recycling approximately 1 billion gallons of treated wastewater annually, thereby preserving water resources and nurturing the delicate Hilton Head Island environment. And whereas the Water Quality Supervisor of the PSD, Sarah Hickman, has been duly recognized by receiving the esteemed Crystal Crucible Award for her outstanding contributions to waste and to water and wastewater analysis, her promotion of professionalism, and her dedication to fostering distinguished ideals among industry professionals. And whereas Sarah Hickman's volunteerism, her spirit, and leadership have enriched the water industry in South Carolina, and have also earned her the honor of representing our state at the prestigious Challenge at IFAT Munich. And whereas the Public Service District's commitment to excellence extends beyond environmental stewardship, as evidenced by the successful hosting of the statewide Asset Management Workshop in 2023, earning recognition from the Water Environment Association of South Carolina. Now therefore, it is resolved that Beaufort County Council extends its gratitude to the Hilton Head Public Service District and recognizes its exceptional personnel for their significant contributions to the well-being and sustainability of the Hilton Head Island community. So congratulations to all of you.
Just briefly, my name is Frank Torano. I'm the Chair of the Public Service District. There's about 35 to 37 people in the organization. It's a small group that services close to 25,000 customers, who are on the cutting edge of technology, and as long as I'm Chair, we're going to stay that way. Thank you.
Just again, Pete Nardi, General Manager of the PSD. We just really express our gratitude to the County Council and the Councilman McKellen for, for this recognition. And you know, the, these vital services, it's a 24/7/365 business, public water and wastewater utilities, and it doesn't happen without, one, the support of our commission, the support of all of our customers, and the men and women of the PSD, who really are really dedicated professionals that are out there working on, on these, in these resources and on these assets, 24/7/365. So I express my thanks to all of them for their hard work. Thanks for having us.
I'll give this to the Chairman, and you'll get in the center of this photograph. That's for you. You have to hold it. Not heavy, so it's okay. Hold my own. We're going to get in the back of the pool. Thank you. Thank you all very much for coming.
Okay, that concludes our presentations. We're now at the first public comment period. I see before me, we have 16 people that want to talk about Pine Island. We have one person who wants to talk about another item on the agenda. I'm going to take that person first, and is there anyone else in the audience who did not sign up about an agenda item that wants to speak about an agenda item? Okay. I'll get to the group about Pine Island in a moment. Mr. Stewart, would you please come and address council about the item that is on the agenda? Item number 15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of council. I realize what a wonderful task it is that you've undertaken and how much free time it generates and how many opportunities. Thank you to the regular public, and it's unfortunate that only very few of those actually reach your ear. This is a tier one delivery.
A transportation guy knows what he's doing, an engineer. Thank you, Jerry. I'm here as your representative on the Board of the Beaufort Port Royal Convention and Visitor Bureau. We are your DMO for an unincorporated Beaufort County in the northern area. A DMO is a term that gets a lot of play, but has some misunderstandings. You have before you a packet that looks like this. The first page is the map that is on the screen, so the public can see. I mention this to you because a lot of people over the years have had misperceptions about where the ATAX revenues that are paid into Beaufort County come from. They come from your unincorporated area. At the time the previous ordinance was passed, those revenues included Palmetto Bluffing and unincorporated areas. It has since been annexed into Bluffton, and so those dollars go to the town of Bluffton. As you can see on the chart before you, 78% of the ATAX dollars that are generated into your coffers come from northern Beaufort County. 22% come from the area that is marketed south of Beaufort County, that is not marketed by the CVB. The CVB that I'm here representing is a governing board made up of representative parties for organizations like the county, which is our partner, and I'm your representative. I mention this to you because I've attached a letter to this, and the letter in here indicates to you that we're not here asking for a handout, we're here as your partner. What we've seen, the results we have actively produced that are measurable by state coffers, that for every dollar we've invested in marketing that has been distributed to us by you, we have returned $11 to your coffers in your treasury and your account. That doesn't include business license fees, hospitality fees, prepared foods. If you add those, it generates a little over $14. I'm just a simple business guy, but my mentors told me if I could lay down the dollar and pick up 11, I should continue doing that, and it's served me well over the years, and I hope you will consider that as you look at this. We are delighted that you are considering how to best use your ATAX dollars, because tourism and accommodation taxes represent the second biggest economic driver in Beaufort County after the military. However, we don't do as good a job as we could as a county. As an example, we have some wonderful historic and cultural attractions here that need some help, but we need an objective and fair way to measure how to help them arrive at a point where they not only fulfill the expectations that visitors have here, but for the schoolchildren, the parents, and the people that are part of this community. We can help you with that. There are also mechanisms in place where we can do things to help with collections. For instance, it's been estimated that somewhere between $300,000 and $1 million a year in short-term rental fees could be collected by the county by deploying some new technology and software- and software that has not been historically available. We have discussed that in the past. I've had others with staff, but there's been a lot of turnover and changes. But since you brought this before, I just want to let you know we're committed to doing that because we think we can help you with that. Between those things, we think you can generate somewhere between $1 million and $1.5 million increased ATAC and H-TAC dollars by partnering with us without asking you to spend any more dollars than you're currently spending, but to invest the other ones in ways that we can give you measurable support. And I'll also tell you that we have a responsibility for transparency. We have a responsibility for accountability. And we have gone way out of our way to do that. We don't have members. There's no conflict with membership. The CVB separated from the chamber for that purpose several years ago. One of the reasons you see the 78% number here is because Rob Wells, who's in the back, in the Board of Directors for the CVB, every time they wake up and that staff wakes up, they're asking what they need to do to help our restaurant and other people succeed in this area. And make no mistake, without visitors, probably 40% of the restaurants in Beaufort County would close. With them, we have better restaurants, better activities to choose from. I have for you some additional information, but I won't present it today because I know you're on a short schedule and I want to respect your time. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay, the rest of the people want to be here and talk about Pine Island. How many of you in the room want to talk about Pine Island? How many of you are in favor of us taking an action that allows the owner of Pine Island to develop the property? Okay. The rest of you are opposed. You see on our agenda, we're going to have an executive session item to discuss Pine Island. We are not going to take any action. There is going to be a mediation session on April the 19th. We will receive information, legal advice regarding what we can and cannot say regarding that. So, to be fair, I'm going to allow people from both sides to speak to council for a short period of time. I'm going to do 10 minutes of each of you. So, and I know that trying to choose that, I'm going to choose the wrong person. Okay? I don't want to do that. Okay? I'm going to let you decide on the pro and the con, who you would like to be your spokespersons. So, I'm going to allow back and forth. So is there someone besides Senator Margie Bright Matthews who would like to speak?
For or against.
For or against.
For or against. Well, let's do the fours. Who wants to speak for? Okay. One, two, three, four of you. There's five. Can you do two minutes each? Okay. You will be the five people. How about five people from the other side? That could speak two minutes each. Okay? All right. So, someone from the four side, would you come and please? Two minutes. As quickly as you can, tell us what you want regarding this item.
My name's Roy Brown, and I stand here to support Pine Island and CCAN. But before I get to Pine Island, I'd like to say, as a co-founder of CCAN, I have to respond to a letter written by Ms. Inez Miller. And I don't think that she wrote it, but rather than Ms. Inez, I would like to talk directly to the group of puppeteers who uses brown and black people for their own personal good. Own personal good. And that is the CCL. Everybody knows who that is. Culture conservative group that says a coastal conservative league that said they preserve properties all over the country. I urge to send hell in the group, to beware of the CCL. CCL has done this before, using black and brown people against each other. Recently, in Charleston, South Carolina, if you want to, Charleston County threw them out of court, out of the council meeting, for playing fast and loose with the facts. Ex former Charleston County Councilman Teddy E. Pryor.
30 seconds. You have 30 seconds.
Okay. I ask you to look at this again, ladies and gentlemen. Watch who's leading you for their own personal agenda. From their book, the only admired thing, shameless manipulation. Manipulating African Americans to fight against each other for the good of their own personal projects.
Thank you. Someone who is now against. Sir, wait, your turn. Go ahead.
Robert New. Thank you, members of council. Thank you for your public service. It has now been 15 months since staff members presented and defended a term amendment that would have gutted the CPO safeguards on St. Helena. Mr. Greenway and Ms. Ward both alleged the proposed amendment had nothing to do with Pine Island.
Right.
Yes.
Hopefully, one day, the facts surrounding the backroom shenanigans will also be revealed to the public, including the foster call, three-six-hole golf course nonsense. No gates, no golf. Back committee meeting, January of last year, genuinely awakened our quiet, often neglected little piece of heaven. Meeting after meeting, month after month, vote after vote, huge crowds of St. Helena residents filled these chambers and beyond to save St. Helena. Notwithstanding the mistrust that had lingered for generations, you listened. We are grateful. This will not be the last developer coming. The allure of St. Helena is simply too strong. The overwhelming majority of our community is now energized and ready to stand with you to preserve this last culturally significant Golegucci Sea Island. Thank you.
Okay, the next, the next person who wants to speak for? Please come forward. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, right. I'm gonna come here and I'm gonna start off with a prayer that no weapon formed against me shall prosper. And I also want to remind people in the audience that this is not 1821 Ancebellos, as you know right now. So let's have respect for each other and speak respectfully. I want to have a little bit of storytime here. But first, I want to ask everyone, if you have 500 acres of farmland, would you use it to farm? So a little storytime and background on CCAN, because a lot of people wonder how we even came into existence. I had a small stint at what should be the beacon of our community in St. Helena Island, and I was happy to be there. Every day, three to four benihas, and some comehers, would come and talk to me and tell me behind the scenes, they're not going to do anything you want to do. They don't care about us in this community. They don't do anything for us in this community. I'm like, that's sad. Let's change that narrative. What can I do, being in the place that can help everyone in St. Helena Island? So I started to work with many people, some people in the community that are now upset because I used to work there, now I don't. I used to work there, and I've worked with them in the community to better our community. CCAN was formed because after creating many programs, including a whole month of black history programming for our people and our residents, as well as creating a farm-to-table program so we can utilize maybe the 500 acres that are unutilized for our community, we also created $25,000 income, new income revenue stream from that one weekend of this farm-to-table program that we had at this place. As a St. Helena resident, someone who works in St. Helena Island, someone who lives in St. Helena Island, someone whose daughter goes to the after-school program in St. Helena Island that she will soon be aged out of because there's only one after-school program in St. Helena Island. What are we going to do for our children after that? I am with Ms. Carrie Major, who says we need to have some investment for our youth in the program, and that's what we're doing here at CCAN. What is CCL doing for the youth and the people in our community? Absolutely nothing. Thank you.
All right, the next person who wants to speak against?
Mr. Chairman. Let them speak to council and not to the audience.
Please address us.
Hello, my name is Marquis Farrell. I reside at 195 Eddings Point Road. I've spoken to you guys numerous times before because I was a planning commissioner during the drafting of what became the CPO. Now, what I want to make clear to everyone is I read very well. I understand what I read, and I am able to communicate that I understand those things. I am no one's puppet. Secondly, I want to bring to you guys right now that all we are asking you to do is what you have done continuously for other communities. When Bluffton said that they didn't want an overpass, you listened to them. Now that you have things going on in your district, 100 people signed a petition, and you're listening to them. We're asking that you listen to the 20,000 people who we had signed a petition saying that they don't want this. All I am asking for, and right now, is for you to keep the course. We have made sure that everyone has had a chance to speak. We have given several, several opportunities. Meaning, they have gone through zoning. They have gone through the planning commission. They have gone through natural resources. They have come to this body. And every time, it was cited with the comprehensive plan, which was drafted as the ordinance that would govern these type of situations. That's all we're asking. We're asking that you uphold your own ordinance, that you not be bullied, and that you make sure that the rule of law is respected. Are you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next person who wants to speak for? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jendia Blunt. I am a disabled Navy veteran, and I'm a serial entrepreneur, mentor, philanthropist in my own right. I am the founder and CEO of Mid-City Youth Sports, Mid-City Youth Sports Association. It is a youth nonprofit association that services about 30 of the local youth. I have about 30 youth participants. And being in this organization, I can attest to the fact that the children that I tutor and that I'm mentoring in my program, they are behind. They need access to resources. I am, I am learning from my loved ones and friends in this area, in this community, that they have made a decision based on half-truths. Okay? That they have been led astray, and they have been given miscommunication about the golf course that they think that they have stopped. They're not being fully made aware of the alternative option, which is the 166-home development with 166 septic tanks, 100 boat docks, which will de, de, boat docks, I know how to articulate, which will decrease the, which will decrease the student teacher, increase the student-teacher ratio, which will also increase the resources that we need in this community, and will increase the fear that these residents have of their sustainability, because that is what it is. They fear sustainability. They, they have been led to believe that this is something that's going to be helpful to them, and they have not been given the full truths about what the real ramifications of this development is going to be. All I'm asking, I urge the people to have the conversation. Change the narrative. Conversations and negotiations are meant to get a better understanding. And I urge them, I implore them, to make a decision based on the correct information and not information that they're speculating.
Could you hold up just one minute? I see you remiss in my duties. If I didn't ask you to stop the murmuring and the commentary while someone is in front speaking. This is not a version of the British Parliament, where everybody yells at everybody. I'd like to just let you have respect for the speaker and don't, even as I'm speaking, I'm hearing it. I'm asking you, please, do not speak when someone else is speaking. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Robert Adams from the Penn Center, executive director of the Penn Center. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and to thank you for your continued support of the CPO. The Penn Center, reflecting the sentiments of the vast majority of St. Helena residents, remains unequivocally in support of upholding the CPO without exemptions. I know it's, I know it's important to lay down a critique of Penn, but I think that our 162 years of community service and, and education stand on its own merit. So we have no personal agenda besides representing the community and the land and preservation, cultural preservation. This issue is not racially divisive. Penn was founded as a multiracial project for the education and preservation of culture and history. The longstanding relationship with the Coastal Conservation League is not some bamboozle. It's not some sort of, you know, just recent relationship. It dates back to Dr. Emory Campbell and many years in the original preservation school that we ran in 93 to 95, of which the CPO came out of. So this fight that we're fighting now in support of the CPO is a continuation of the legacy and of the, the forebearers that brought us to this point, and it'll be the struggle that we continue to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next person for?
Good afternoon. You took my icebreaker. What about those Carolina Gamecocks? My name is Jesse Gadd, and I'm a real estate investor. I have property in Port Royal, Big Estate, St. Helena, which is butted up to Pine Island. Also have property in Burton. If I'm to build a house in Burton or Big Estate, I can build it on a quarter acre of land. On St. Helena, I need three acres. So I think the CPO should be abolished because it enable, it doesn't allow me to do what I need to do with my property. I wanted to build tiny houses for veterans, but I can't because I can only build three. So, one of the problems I have is this property on Pine Island, everybody in here that's opposed to it had an opportunity to buy it. The problem I have is when you buy a piece of property, you should have the right to do as you please as long as, as long as it doesn't offend the waterways. I mean, a person from someplace else shouldn't come in, or groups shouldn't come in and dictate what you've done with your property when you've spent over 18 million of dollars for the property to start with. So my thing is, and by the way, Penn Center, my ancestor was the one that donated the land to Penn Center for the first school for freed slaves. And we need to go back to having Penn Center as a trade center so that the folks in this area can start paying the taxes.
10 seconds.
Thank you.
Good evening. Go Gamecocks. A husband and wife saved over a long period of time to take a trip to Jerusalem. And so they went to Jerusalem, and the man died on the first day while he was in Jerusalem. The undertaker came to him and asked him, we can bury your husband on this hill over here, or we can ship him back to, for $300, or we can ship him back to America for $5,000. What would you like to do? She said, I'm going to take him back to America because I heard that the last time I heard of some man that was buried here in Jerusalem, he arose the third day. And the point of that is that the Pine Island golf and gated community is dead. It's been dead. It's been dead for over 24 years. The death certificate was the CPO. That's the death certificate. It was published that investor knowingly and willingly purchased land, knowing that it was, could not be developed into a golf and gated community. So he purchased- land knowing that it was, could not be developed into a Gulf and Gated Community. So, he purchased the project as is. And now he's coming to the council and asking for a bailout. The investor is asking for a bailout. I need a bailout also in some bad investments that I made.
Thirty seconds.
So, it's dead, it's been dead on arrival, and it's been dead for a long time. Does, so we ask that you stick with the decision that you made. If this was an SAT test, it would say stick with your first answer. And the first answer was no, and that was the best answer, and it should not be deviated from that. So, please stand strong on what you have done and don't open up a can of worms. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final person, four.
Good evening. My name is Teresa White. I'm the founder and chief executive officer of the Pan-African Family Empowerment and Land Preservation Network. Slavery used to be legal, segregation used to be legal, child labor used to be legal, and it used to be legal not to allow women to vote on a credit card in their own name. But Americans have historically done what's necessary to change laws that are unjust. That's why today I'm here to ask the youth look at working on to change the CPO, to loosen it up so that people can be able to use their land for development that can create enough income for them to be able to pay their property taxes so they won't lose their land. One of the things that my organization does is to pay property taxes for people who can't afford it, keep it from going to tax sales, and redeem property that's already been sold at tax sales. In the case of Pine Island, I think the fairest thing to do, given the errors that were left in the ordinance legislation for the CPO back in nineteen ninety-nine, according to the Dent County Attorney, is to go ahead and carve out, uh, area, excuse me, go ahead and carve out the St. Helena Bill property and the Pine Island property, and allow Mr. Trapano to develop his golf course, to create a uniform zoning ordinance for all of rural land in, in Beaufort County so that you can't have a situation where you can only build one house on an acre in one area and another, and a house on a quarter acre in another area. I'd like to see the planning commission go back and redo it. If not, you'll have to be faced with a lawsuit that can go all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court and end up costing us a bunch of money that doesn't need to be spent. Thank you.
And the final person, four.
Thank you again for the opportunity. I am a permanent resident of the Delamo community that borders on this national historic preservation area of Pine Island that includes St. Helenaville. I implore you to uphold the zoning rules and prior decisions, but I'm gonna jump to something. I want to thank York Glover. I was at that meeting at Russ Point, standing room only, and I asked you to look at the pictures from Russ Point, from that boat launch, and how very severe the deterioration of that very valuable community resource. It's truly indicative of the vulnerability of our waterways here. There's numerous conservation projects in the works in partnership with our military, the Coastal Conservation League, the Open Land Trust and DNR. I have participated in many of these, and I want to thank you. I think the county has a very solid, long-range plan, comprehensive plan in place, and we appreciate your due diligence.
Thank you. We are going to end the citizens' comment at this point in time. I've heard from both sides. Those of you who did not get a chance to speak, we do have a second one that I will entertain some more comments. We are at the liaison and committee reports. Is there any member of council wishes to make a report? Of course you do, Ms. Tavernick.
Mr. McAllen? I was not able to attend the school board on person, but I did watch online. It was very long, and they had two. But I think what's important for people to know is they have expended forty-two point four percent of their budget at half-year, so they're running under budget. And the CFO, Tanya Crosby, provided a draft comprehensive financial report for every school in the district. It was pretty impressive, and that, they will be using that to work on the next budget. She also said that tax collections are very healthy as of January thirty-first, that local tax revenue collections as percentage of budget is ninety-eight point one percent. And operations, this was a giant discussion, a motion passed that the operations committee recommended to outsource custodial services. So, they're gonna go for bid. It's, you're talking a five million dollar item. They're looking into programs for better use of technology. They adopted thirteen textbook. And then they had an April third meeting, which I just couldn't do two hours of. I mean, I was, and they reviewed current legislative agenda items, and maybe our senator would know. Uh, one was closing schools for Veterans Day, which they support, but then there were other things like school board audits by the state every three years, parents' bill of rights, year-round school calendar, just a whole bevy of things that they're talking about legislatively. It was a lot of stuff for them, but I'm not on the school board.
Any other comments?
Ms. Tavernick and myself, and Ms. Howard, attended Robert Small's one hundred and eighty-five birthday party last Friday here in Beaufort. That was, and it was put on by the Riverview School, and the kids did a great job. So, I just wanted to-
Thank you. Any others? I have a couple of comments. First, as you know, we are seeking a county administrator. We have hired a firm. That firm is in the process of seeking the applications. So far, we have one hundred and twenty-seven people have at least taken a look at Beaufort County. Forty-six have filed actual applications. Of that, I think it's in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen meet all the criteria for the position. So, Beaufort County is going to be able to have a very successful candidate coming forward. So, stay tuned for that. You will receive updates as we go along. Number two, as you are aware, this November, we intend to have a referendum, a transportation referendum. We held our first meeting on April fourth in the chambers here. We talked about the overall process as well, as well as try and focus on what's going to be happening in the city of Beaufort. Some things were very positive, some things were very negative, some people do not understand. We're trying to get everybody's input so that we can educate you exactly what is part of the referendum, why we need it. One of the examples was, why were we talking about one seventy and two seventy-eight? The reason we're talking about one seventy and two seventy-eight, they're the two major roads for people to go to work in Beaufort County. People from here have to travel down one seventy to two seventy-eight when they work on the island. Neither of those roads work. The transportation referendum will in fact fix them. So, we have upcoming meetings. Next week, on the eleventh, we're gonna be on Hilton Head Island at the library. Following that, on the eighteenth, we'll be at the Buck Walter Recreation Center. Following that, on the twenty-ninth, we'll be at the St. Helena Library. Following that, we will be back here in northern Beaufort County. We're not sure exactly the site or the date, but stay tuned. All of this will take place to get input from the community prior to the third reading and the final reading and the adoption of the question on the referendum. So, you will see, receive a lot more information. Go on our website, there's a lot of information there. Come to these meetings. You will be able to see what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, when we're gonna do it, and where we're going to do it. Okay. We're now ready to take the action items. I would ask a member of council to make a motion for our consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham made the motion. Ms. Brown, you made the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any questions? This will be, the consent agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number fourteen is our public hearing and third reading of an ordinance appropriating funds from the state ATAX funds as recommended by the state ATAX committee in compliance with the requirements of the South Carolina Code of Laws. May I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Tavernick makes the motion. Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Before I turn it over to council, is there any member of the audience wishes to comment about this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any comments from our council?
I'm the one that's gonna vote no for this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment. As I've said before, and we've all talked, there will be changes going forward. We're going to meet with some members of the other groups, but this would be one time now because it was too far out the gate, and there will be changes in the future.
Thank you.
I'm voting no as well.
No other discussion? This will be approved with eight yes and two no. The two noes being Ms. Brown and Mr. Reitz. Motion is approved, eight to. Item number fifteen is a third reading of an ordinance amending Chapter sixty-six Taxation Article Two Accommodation Tax Board, Division One Generally and Division Two Accommodations Three Percent Tax. I would like a motion and second, and then I would like someone to make the following amendment to that once we have adopted this. So, a motion and second, please.
A motion, we put it on the table.
Mr. Glover made the motion. Ms. Tavernick made the second. I would ask a member of council to make a motion to amend this item, Section sixty-six dash forty-eight, which is applicability and effective date. It should read, changing it to, "The division shall become effective July one, twenty twenty-four." As was indicated in the prior one, we are almost all the way through this calendar year. Therefore, it makes sense not to institute this, as it's said here, upon approval by council. So, that is the amended motion. Will someone make that motion? Mr. McKellen made the motion, a second?
A second.
Mr. Dawson made the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Any question? Seeing none, the item will be adopted without objection. The amendment will be adopted without objection. Okay? Now, we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion? We're going to vote on the amended item. Okay? Is there any objection?
I'm gonna vote no for this as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
I am too.
That's two. Anyone else? Seeing none, this will be adopted, eight yes, two no. Moving on to item number sixteen is a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter ninety-nine Storm Water Management Article Two, Storm Water Management Utility Sections One Ten, Storm Water Service Fee Billing, Delinquencies and Collections, and One Thirteen Enforcement and Penalties of the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. A motion, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion.
I'll second that.
Ms. Brown makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number seventeen is a first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty-three slash thirty-two, an ordinance to amend the Beaufort County ordinances establishing a road use fee.
I'll motion that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Bartholmew. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just wanted to say for the people here, it seems like we're going through a lot of these fast. A lot of these have already been discussed in committees, and that's why a lot of these questions have already been ironed out. So, if you have any questions about them or about the presentations that have already been given on them, please go back and check some of those meetings, and, because we have presentations about most of these in the past couple of weeks, and that's why they're coming up now and why you see it going through so quickly. It's not that we're not engaged or anything along those lines, it's just we've already had these conversations in the committees.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm gonna vote against this. We're in the process of putting a referendum out to the general public in November for the one cent sale tax for road paving, road creating, the whole nine yards transportation projects. And I don't see, I don't see a need for us to increase the, the fee for registration taxation until we know, until I know whether the referendum in November is going to pass. So, at this time, I'm not gonna support it.
Mr. Chairman, I may, I believe the main point of this was to make sure that we don't charge the veterans and other people that were not supposed to be, the original ordinance, we messed some language up, so we went back and changed it off the auditor's suggestion so as we don't tax or offer this fee on veterans and other people that aren't required to pay it.
Right, we've had this-
Is not increased?
It, no, we've already increased it. This is a modification of the language.
We've had this for years at the fee that we've had.
Okay.
This one is, as Mr. Bartholmew said, we have individuals who would have to pay that we don't think should be paying this road use fee.
And those are the veterans.
The veterans, yes.
And I think you may have been-
And there's a few others. Okay.
My mistake.
Does that change your mind?
That's good, I'm good.
Okay. This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number nineteen is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the acceptance of properties pursuant to a development agreement between Beaufort County and Cherokee Beaufort LLC. A motion, please? Oh, I skipped the-
Mr. Chairman, I think we missed eighteen.
Yeah. Reverse that. We're doing the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration Article Seven Finance Division Two Fees and Services Charged Generally, Section Two Dash Four Three Seven Road Use Fee of Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. Now, a motion on that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham.
I'll second.
Ms. Tavernick, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Yes, sir?
Mr. Dawson may want to vote against this one if he's talking about the increase.
No, it's not an increase.
But he's actually taking it back to what it was.
No.
That's what we dismissed.
This one is just changing the code of ordinances.
Right.
It's just changing the code of- The decision that council's made.
Okay, oh, okay.
Right. Okay, so you're gonna change your mind, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Now, I'm gonna read this again. Those of you who didn't get it the first time, first reading of an ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the acceptance, acceptance of properties pursuant to a development agreement between Beaufort County and Cherokee Beaufort LLC. A motion, please.
So moved, sir.
Mr. McKellen.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item twenty is approval of a resolution of an intergovernmental agreement between Beaufort County and Hilton Head Island for William Hilton Parkway Safety and pedestrian, pedestrian improvement.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reitz.
I'll second it.
Ms. Tavernick, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. We're now at the point of citizen comments. We do have a couple of people that want to talk about certain things. Anthony, will you please come forward? You want to talk about the DeFuski Island Council report. Yes, we're back to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Capuccio. I'm a member of the DeFuski Island Council. I also am a member of the DeFuski Island Ferry Committee and the Roads Committee. Wanted to let you know that residents continue to express many concerns about the sustainability of the public ferry boats and the docks. The primary concern is the safety of the residents who- residents who depend on the public ferry, and especially the elderly and disabled residents. One example is yesterday, we had another incident when an elderly woman tripped on a missing board on the Melrose Dock and hit her head. Her wrist was also injured. She went to a Hilton Head Urgent Care Center for X-rays. One thing we're continuing to work on as well is policies about carrying groceries and other items that are not, and other items that are not consistent, and people are told different things on a daily basis, day to day. For example, last week, we had a resident was told that the grain she had brought for kitchen, sorry, for chickens was freight, and she was actually charged more for the cost of the grain for the freight fee. May seem like a little thing, but these new charges are really starting to hurt people on the island. They just add up, and it becomes a hardship. One other thing is the council is hearing a lot of problems with the Palmetto Breeze passes, including residents being denied a card and back payments not being credited to their accounts. I know I personally had a lot of issues as a property owner there. We had to submit a lot of documents to prove that we were, you know, that we actually owned and lived there, even with, you know, submitting electric bills. I'd, you know, produce deeds, tax statements. So there's quite a bit of a process there, so we hope that that can, hopefully, we can get the last remaining residents that are lingering out there resolved. Several of us on the council also have expressed concerns with ferry-related problems to the operator, as well as county staff. We did meet with Low Country Ferry a couple of weeks ago. We did start talking about these issues, but we're still waiting on, waiting on some replies and looking to hear back up for some answers. On a different note, I do want to say thank you to the council. We're very appreciative of the potholes that were filled on Hague Point Road, especially, it was right in front of the fire department, so it was a really rough patch. I know I use that road on a regular basis, so it's a big improvement. We will be working with the county here this year as well. We've got some more improvements to do, and we're looking forward to working with y'all on that as well.
Thirty seconds.
On our, and our goal today is, you know, to secure another meeting with the DeFuski Island Council, Mr. Abenson and Mr. Robinson, so we can discuss the issues and find solutions, and we can report back to the community with some solid feedback. One last item, we would like to request a thirty-day extension on the existing Palmetto Breeze passes so that we have time to develop and implement solutions for our current problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joyce Hamm.
I'm sorry. I don't think I have much, but I'll guess I'll say something. What I wanted to say is that this is home for me, and it has been home for me since seventeen ninety, when my grandmother's name was on the first census here in Beaufort County. And a lot of people talk about benias and cumias, but we've been paying taxes since taxes came around in Beaufort County. And we weren't, we didn't even have to pay taxes prior to that because the land was already ours. But now, it's a lot of hardship that is placed on us here, where we're having to endure a lot of costs when we're not actually being given adequate employment. When I say employment, it's not just employment to have a job. Even Beaufort County doesn't pay people that much money to be able to afford a living. So, and when people start talking about, you know, the water level rising, Robert Smalls was here, and I was going to school here at Robert Smalls, and the water level was rising, and they said, "We're going to move Robert Smalls." And they moved, the county, I'm sure, made a decision to move Robert Smalls, and guess what? Robert Smalls was sinking over there where y'all made a decision to move it over there, too. And so even though we make choices and make decisions, we still have to consider the people here that's been here. You understand? Because even if you made a decision to move Robert Smalls from here to over there, and the ground was sinking over there, now all that money that we invested over there is lost because we had to tear that school down and build a whole nother school. So we'll have to see what happens with this other ground over there and how this school goes for the third time during my lifetime.
Thank you. Ann.
Good evening. My name is Ann Ubelis, and I am with the chair of the Beaufort Tea Party. I'm here to discuss the sales tax. You're asking us to foot a fifteen-year, one percent, one point six five billion dollar sales tax. You've got to be out of your mind. You can't run the DeFuski Ferry, nor can you control your staff's misuse of funds. Where is the investigative report for public review? An incomplete report we paid for. Redact the employees' names while the AG investigates. Release what you currently have to the public. This tax covers already approved projects from the twenty eighteen sales tax. Only twenty-four percent are complete. Eighteen out of twenty-five are in design or pre-design stages. Only two are under construction. You include those unfinished projects in the new tax. We call that double dipping. We already paid, and you want us to pay again. We already gave you public displeasure on reimagine, rebuild. That's in the new tax. You create a hundred and seventy-five million dollar slush fund for future projects, not future referendums for future projects. You throw another nine hundred and seventy-five million into a second slush fund for small projects. Highly vague description for your pet projects. You have county staff mouth feasts with our money, and you want slush funds? Where is the participation and recommendation of the county transportation board? It doesn't exist. The council allowed unfettered growth. You fix it, but not on our dime. At the height of the COVID pandemic in June of twenty twenty, with people hurting, people worried about staying afloat, this county council coldly and in our face voted yourself a pay raise. What compassion. Thank you. And you want us to trust you with the fifteen-year tax? That's generational taxation. This is not Charleston. Oh, wait, you say it's not an increase, a replacement. Nice semantics. I fled high taxes, irresponsible government, but here we are, twenty-four years later, and you're no different. Sales tax went from four percent up to eight, oh, now down to seven. Just a few more dollars. Tell that to the struggling middle-class, low-income, and elderly, what is placed on almost every single goods and services in this county. As to the road use fee from every registered vehicle, thank you for the amendment to put it towards road maintenance and repair, not deposit it to the general fund. However, because of the lack of county oversight and our tax dollars, keep the annual evaluation in place. You want our trust, you earn it back. Lower the sales tax. Complete all phases of the referendum of twenty eighteen, green space projects, curb growth, clean up the corruption, and access state and federal dollars. Then come and ask us for a responsible referendum for a smaller amount of money for a handful of years with a non-renewable sunset clause.
Thank you.
Just maybe we'll say yes. We're watching.
Our last person, Carrie Majors.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Carrie Major. I'm the founder of Carrie's Low Country Modeling and Beaufort County Youth Conference, just to mention a few of the nonprofit organizations that are concerned with the welfare of our youth. We're also collaborative effort. I'm also retired alcohol and drug counselor, and this is what I want to read. How should we grow hashtag play in Beaufort County? Welcome to Beaufort County Parks and Recreation. Beaufort County Parks and Recreation provides a myriad of services and programs at facilities located throughout Beaufort County. We utilize proactive means to provide fun, safe, and fiscally responsible recreational services to elevate the quality of life in our county and region, except St. Helena Island. There is none there. Buckwalter Recreation Center. Key features: a soccer complex, outdoor skate park, indoor track, cardio equipment, indoor batting cages, four indoor basketball courts, two indoor racquetball courts, indoor volleyball, weight room, other amenities, indoor concession rooms, two classrooms, large multipurpose room with a mini kitchen, and on and on. We're thankful that they have all these amenities, but we're looking for something for St. Helena. We again ask council to do something for St. Helena. We need a community center over on St. Helena Island, state-of-the-art, centrally located, where we can have, and this is a vision, a multipurpose facility on St. Helena Island for youth and adults that will provide adequate space and opportunities for engaging in educational support, technology support, sports, and leisure activities designed to positively impact lives. We want to impact lives on St. Helena Island, young and old alike. We need that facility in order for us to do it. We don't want you to give us any fixer-uppers. Please don't throw us any more peanuts. Please come forth with the money. She just read something with all the monies that has been put for other things, other issues, roads, all of these other things. Please put something for our children. We need something on St. Helena Island. We love our community just as much as everyone else does. We're looking forward to you doing something. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to go into an executive session. There are five items. I'm going to read the five items that we're going to be in executive session for. We're going to go in pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty-four dash seventy A two Receipt of Legal Advice, where the legal advice relates to matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, excuse me, the Freedom of Information Act. Second one is the same, but it is going to be in queries and investigations pursuant to South Carolina Code Section four dash nine dash six six zero. The next one is legal advice related to matters for attorney-client privilege, pending litigation, Walls versus Beaufort County. Next is pursuant to the Code thirty-four, thirty dash four dash seventy A two, to engage in discussions and negotiations, incident to propose contractual arrangements for the DeFuski Ferry Emergency Services. And finally, receipt of legal advice where the advice relates to pending claims that are covered by the attorney-client privilege Pine Island Holdings LLC versus Beaufort County. May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover made the motion. Mr. McKellen made the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are going to be in executive session. I don't know how long that's going to take. When we come out, I am not sure if there are going to be any matters arising out of executive session. Yes?
I'll ask for your something. I was on the question that I would be at the streets of Florida and went into executive session. So was I.
Our fifteen minutes allows one more speaker.
Well, I'd like to speak, too.
Ms. Matthews, come forward.
No, we need somebody forward.
Thank you very much. I sincerely apologize. I didn't understand, I imagine, when you were talking about, when you named me earlier. And I'm going to make this as quick as possible. Thank you for your comments, councilmen, regarding civility. It is important. We are one community. We have to listen to each other. Just to give you a quick rundown, Pine Island purchased five hundred and two acres in twenty twenty-two from a private entity with by right authorization that they already had. I'm not sure if any of you have been out to Pine Island. It's beautiful property. It already has a gate on it. It already has houses, and it's a beautiful piece of property. What does by right mean? By right means zero public input, county approval, or legislative approval in order to do what they already have the right to do, which would be a hundred and eighty-eight houses and a bunch of docks. Why are we here? Pine Island wants to instead decrease the density to benefit the purpose of the CPO, which is to slow down gentrification. I don't know why folks keep saying that there will be no gentrification. The CPO doesn't even say that. The CPO specifically says incremental. They are proposing what the CPO was already done for, which is downsizing. Why are we here? Because there's so many outside voices and internal voices. That's what happens in a church or in a community. When outside entities break up the people, it causes confusion, and they don't want to talk to each other. Right now, under the law, and that's why you're going into executive session, we're under court-mandated mediation. All of the other parties, the intervenors, have met with the mediators. Even though some are represented by me, eight of them, they each talk to the intervenors. Some of the other folks opposing have talked to the intervenors. I'm just here to ask you to have an open mind for Beaufort County and talk a lot, because he doesn't have a stake in it one way or the other. He's just trying to get the matter resolved, lower the cost to the people of Beaufort, and more importantly, and I think this is important, his job is to make sure that everybody's voices are heard, and especially, I don't want to step on St. Helena, Ladies Island, or, of course, my area, the northern part. Gentrification is real, but please let your voices be heard with reason, not just the loudest voices. And I thank you for your time, and I can't believe I did it within the amount of time.
Congratulations.
You have to make some warrior.
One more?
Not as a senator. Why didn't you get there?
I call the shots here. You are the final speaker.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Marie Gibbs, a longtime resident of St. Helens Island. The purpose of the CPO was the idea of what's the Helena community wanted. And lately, I see a lot of people coming up here. We've been at this one year. It's like we had a reading of the will, and people coming out of the woodwork to get their share of what's left over. But on this island, those that are in favor or oppose this, please stand. Everybody who's against it, please stand.
Please, address us. Everybody sit down.
All right.
You have two minutes and twenty seconds.
Okay, what we say here is, we are the land. The land is us. When developers come here, they see dollar signs. We see life. We are stitched and woven into this land. If you take that land, you taking us, because that is our life, and that's why we fight so hard. We're not fighting for, we're fighting for our life and the way we live, because our ancestors picked four hundred pounds of cotton so we can have this land today, and that's all we have, and we fight and fight to keep our life, way of life, the way we are. So we just say, we thank you for what you've done, and we sincerely hope when you go on your sessions, you make the right decision and follow the rules of the CPO that you asked us to strengthen, and we've done that already. Thank you for listening to us, and we are very proud people on that island, and we are residents of that island that's been there for years and years. And we're not playing with developers coming in. We are trying to preserve our life, and we don't need anyone to save us or tell us what we need. We know what we need. That's what the CPO was all about. Thank you so much.
We were duly motioned and seconded. There is no objection. We are now going into executive session.
Okay, we are back in open session from our executive session. Sorry it took a little bit longer but there were five individual items to discuss. There is no action to be taken as a result of our executive session, therefore no action coming forward. This meeting is now adjourned.
(knock on door)